This is the Wapaka School District Board of Education meeting.
Okay, it is 5:15. Start with President's comments. Again, I would like to thank everyone for making time to be here this evening, either in person or virtually. I don't think this meeting will be too bad time-wise. We do have a lot on the agenda, but I think we'll be able to move right along, or virtually. I don't think this meeting will be too bad time-wise. We do have a lot on the agenda, but I think we'll be able to move right along. I'd also like to take a moment to thank all the candidates that have come forward for the school board. Certainly, the commitment to our students of all of the individuals is much appreciated. With that, one other item, item four on the agenda, before we get to the approval of the agenda, I'm sorry, item six. When we say review of district's strategic plan, it is not a review for approval of a revised plan. We have just changed up a little bit so that we can rotate between various items such as the board norms, which we've traditionally been using for the last year to start things out, and look at things such as our mission, vision, values, et cetera. So I just want to make sure that everybody was clear on that, that that was not approval. Those, in essence, are draft strategic plan items for consideration at a future meeting. With that, I'll ask everyone to please join me in a bunch. Thank you very much. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with roll call.
Steve Hackett? Betty Manion?
Here.
Here.
Mark Pobinski?
Here.
Sandy Robinson?
Here.
Dale Feld?
Here.
Steve Johnson?
Here. So that is our motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dale Feld, second by Sandy Robinson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to public comment. I did not receive any emails for public comment, nor to draw on. Does anyone online or in person wish to make public comment at this time? There being none, we'll move on to review of the district's strategic plan. I will start out with the vision and mission, and then Dale, if I could ask you to, if you have that available to you, go with the philosophy and values, and then we will rotate through the foundations, the five foundations. If anybody does not have it immediately available to them, certainly let me know, and we'll move on to someone else. Vision: committed to excellence in education with a mission of developing students' capabilities and confidence to achieve their dreams and make the world a better place. The district will provide a safe, compassionate environment while using community resources wisely. Dale?
Our philosophy is continuous improvement, and the values that we're going to be looking at: committed to excellence in education framework, relationship, safe and collaborative culture, engagement, effective teaching in every classroom, collaboration, guarantee and viable curriculum, commitment and target-based assessment, grading and reporting.
Okay, Sandy, could you check the first pillar, your foundation?
Yes, the first pillar of our strategic plan is future and career readiness. Through careful and equitable guidance, we will ensure that our students explore their passions while also focusing on their growth and performance. Our students will be prepared to graduate, achieve their dreams, and make the world a better place.
Betty, the next foundation?
Student and staff will be, through high-quality programming and resources, we will support the physical, social, and emotional health and safety of all students and staff.
Mark, do you have the next foundation available?
Yep. Staff engagement and effectiveness. Through the effective use of professional learning communities guided by our commitment to excellence in education framework, we will foster a professional culture of collective efficacy.
Pat, the next foundation, please.
Sure. Family, community, and business partnerships. Through communication and engagement, we will develop collaborative partnerships with our families, our community members, and area businesses focused on promoting student success.
And I see Steve Hackett. Steve Hackett has joined us. Steve, do you have the final foundation available to you for view?
You're muted, Steve.
I'm looking for it.
I will take it. Finance operations through the creation of a long-term plan, which will be annually updated. We will responsibly invest the funds provided to us by our community. These investments will be aligned to the goals of our district and communicated to our stakeholders to promote transparency and accountability. Thank you, everyone. With that, we can move on to approval of the minutes. I'll start with the February 9, 2021 regular board meeting. Is there a motion?
Second.
Sandy Robinson, is there a second?
Second, fair.
That fair? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved. We'll move on to the February 19, 2021 special board meeting. Is there a motion?
So?
Motion by Betty Manion, second by Dale Feld. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the communications, and we start with the City Park and Recreation 2020 annual report.
And Andrew's online. Andrew, we're going to turn it over to you for this, okay?
Perfect. Thank you, guys, and just appreciate getting a few minutes to speak tonight on our annual report. This is something, if you remember, we created last year, and something we'll do every year here moving forward to make sure that, you know, we're keeping up and letting all of our partners know what's happening. So as you probably all are well aware, 2020 was a difficult year and brought many changes, many adaptations, not only for the school but for us at the city as well. You know, it was really just, some of it was flying by the seat of our pants, and some of it was trying to do the best that we can. And so a lot of this annual report really just tries to focus on the positives that came from such a difficult year. So I'll try to hit three areas here quick for you on some of the things that we did that were on a positive side, and then I will try to get everyone copies of these as soon as I can as well. So you can go down to page eight, whoever's scrolling there. So the first area that we got a lot accomplished because of some of the extra time that we had was facility accomplishments and improvements. And so you can see we did 10, what I would consider major improvements in our parks, from new siding in all of our buildings out at Swan Park, to new railings at the beach, some new irrigation, Riverside Park Shelter and bathroom is on there as well, and we can take a look at that on page nine in a second. And then Shadow Lake and Riverside Park playgrounds. You can kind of see every park got a little TLC over the last summer, and a lot of that came because of some of the extra time. And a lot of this is done by my staff in-house, and that saves us a lot, and they get a lot accomplished and do a great job. So let's go down to number nine. You can see the new Riverside shelter, which I know does get used from elementary and middle school students as they come down the trail back behind the courthouse. This is the upgraded shelter that we have there. Another thing that came from a really weird year would be on page 14. So we've really strived in the last couple of years to do a lot of community events. Most of our community events include getting hundreds of people together, and that's just not something we were able to do this last year. But Cassandra did a great job of coming up with some new ideas. So we had virtual summer and ice fishing tournaments. We had a virtual run. We had virtual escape rooms. We had park-and-watch movies, which were very successful, and we're going to build upon that this year. We had a drive-through Halloween event, and one of my favorite things that we did was that nurse care packages. And so we had community members make a nurse care package. They brought it back, and then we delivered 145 of those to the community. So we got them to everyone at Theta Care, some at Aspiris, and a bunch at Bethany as well. So just to try to cheer up the people that were really working hard to get us through the time that we had. So those are some of the new community events that we created, and we're going to continue some of those into 2021 on top of the other things that we do. As far as recreation, a lot of our recreation programs include getting, sorry, page 20 for this one. A lot of our recreation programs include getting a lot of people together in areas, and so we had to kind of tailor to what we could do. And so Cassandra, again, did a great job. We came up with six new programs this past year, including football clinic, Art in the Park, Disc Golf, Running Group, eSports, and then an adult Disc Golf group as well. So those are some of the new things. And again, as we get into more of a quote-unquote "normal" year in 2021, we're going to continue to add these things and do more for the community and offer more for the communities. So again, just trying to focus on the positives. Obviously, numbers overall were down, programs were down, community events were down, but there was a lot of good that came from it as well. And we just want to stay focused on that and move forward normal here in 2021. So other than that, there's a few other things in there, but like I said, I'll try to get you guys copies, and you can take a look at that, and we'll continue to do these into the future.
Andrew, we do have the copies, so our board members have those copies.
Okay. All right. Perfect.
Andrew, I do have one question. I realize with the pandemic, things change, but zero nachos sold? That's one part.
Yeah, we had to throw a little humor in there. We never opened up any of our concession stands last year, so generally, we would send, sell thousands upon thousands of nachos, so we thought we'd point out that we sold zero.
Any predictions for this year?
Of how many nachos? I want to go with 3,472.
Okay, we'll check back next year when you give your summary next year and see how close you are.
We'll see how we did. All right. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah. Andrew, I have one. This is Pat. Is there anything that came out of this last year or that you see into the future that you, since you're speaking to the school board, that the school and the rec department, your programming can collaborate maybe more than we have in the past?
That's a good question, Pat, and I think we're always open to something like that. Unfortunately, I think the school was kind of in the same boat as us as far as being able to do things and thinking, you know, outside of the realm of what we normally do. So, you know, not off the top of my head, but I do have communication with Joe quite a bit, and I think if there's an opportunity there, we'll definitely take that.
Okay, thanks.
Excuse me, other questions for Andrew?
I have a comment.
Comment from Sandy Robinson?
I really enjoyed reading this report, Andrew, and thought that the article that you included related to the cemetery and the chaplain was especially compelling. I can't remember. Is this a new feature for you?
The cemetery, we did have it in there last year, and we actually have quite a few unique people we've found in our cemetery. And this person has a great backstory. If you read up on it and look at the Museum of Danish America, he has a lot of things in that as well. So pretty neat stuff.
And also, I actually was a participant during, or a helper during, the Halloween event that you hosted.
Okay.
It was wonderful. It was just, it was a beautiful day, and people were so happy, and the kids were so happy. And there were adults who came without kids, and they were happy too. So it was a really wonderful event.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Other questions or comments for Andrew? All right, Andrew, thank you very much for spending some time with us this evening to highlight some items on the report, and thank you for the report itself. Appreciate you.
All right. You bet. Thank you. I'm going to log off. I have to get to a council meeting, so have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to the district administrator's report, please.
So we have a few things here. First is the update regarding our vaccination plan, and as you're aware, we received information late last week that our staff will be vaccinated on Wednesday, that's tomorrow, between noon and 3:00. This vaccine is the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which only requires one dose. Our nurses have emailed staff informing them of their vaccination time, and all vaccinations are taking place over at the WLC. And then I also have attached to this a brief update on the health of the district related to COVID. So we're in our fourth week after having fully implemented our transition plan to four days per week of in-person learning. And one thing that I noticed as I went through the data to prepare this report, on any given day, we've been averaging between zero and up to three classroom teachers that are out on any given day for a COVID-related reason. When you look at this first graph here, the week of February 15, which was that week when we implemented the final third phase of the transition, our daily average for classroom teachers out for a COVID-related reason was less than one, 0.6. The next week, we averaged 1.8, the next 2.0. I haven't checked today, but as of yesterday, it was 1.5. And then when you think about that, all of the above data points are the lowest that they've been all school year, and I thought that was terrific. And if you remember back from previous month's reports, the highest that we've had for the number of classroom teachers out for a COVID-related reason was 15 on November 13, and then 16 on November 16. So we've come a long way, and we're pretty happy with where we're at right now. The next chart, again, it takes an average for the week for each day there, and the first column is the daily average for any staff member. So this is all staff, over 330 staff. The week of February 15, we averaged less than one out per day, the next week 1.8. We jumped a week before spring break, 7.8, and as of yesterday, we had one. And the next column is the daily average of any student out for a COVID-related reason. And we went from 40 to 56 to 51, and as of yesterday, it was 26. If you remember, the highest that we had with this particular data point was on November 15, with 30 staff that were out for a COVID-related reason, and 256 students that were out for a COVID-related reason. So going from the highest to where we're at with 26, I think the lowest we had with students was 25 a few days before, either the week before break or the week, two weeks before break. The third chart is the average daily total positive in our school district cohort. And if you remember, we have 2,445, I believe, people in our student/staff cohort. And so this is the average daily positive that we have on our website each day that gets posted. That first week, a full implementation of our transition, was 2.3 positives in our district. The next week was 5, then 2.5, and as of yesterday, it was 1.0. And the most that we experienced through this whole journey has been 11 positives in any given day, and that occurred on November 5, and then on the days of November 20 through November 24. And from that point, it just has been dropping ever since. And then when we look at our county data, because our county data is really a reflection of our district data in parallel, I just took those Mondays of those same weeks for brevity, and the total positive over 14 days, and you can see how it's declining for the most part. We're kind of in a little bit of a plateau. And then the 14-day average on each of those days, and you can see that decline as well. Additional points that I found interesting, February 18, the second, third day into that final implementation of our transition to four days of in-person learning, we had 14 days in a row with a single-digit new positive instead of the double digits, 10 and above. We had 14 days in a row of single digits. It was July 11, was the first day that we experienced a double-digit new positive. It took till July 11. Since February 5, there have only been four days in double-digit new positives. And that's a 39-day span, and that includes four days with zero new positives in those 39 days. So good progress there. March 2, our 14-day average was 4.71. That's the lowest since July 10. Also, the first day with no new positives since August 30. The next time we had a new positive was June 15, and then June 5. March 6, our 14-day average was 3.35, our lowest since July 5. The highest our 14-day average, if you guys remember back, was on November 10 with 51, 51.57, and now we're at 3.35. And the last piece of data here was the March, on March 14, we had the most number of days with zero new positives. We had four days within a 14-day span, and that hasn't happened since May 27. It's nice to talk about May in those previous months. May 27 was the end of a span of seven days that we had with zero new positives over a 14-day period. So things continue to go in the right direction. We're very pleased with that. Transition back to the rest of the report. In this document, I'm not going to go through the February grant report, you can do that, but I'll just kind of mention four of the highlights, and Greg is continuing to do a terrific job. We have received the Mental Health Program grant of $48,000. That's the contract with our giggle therapy through teletherapy sessions for those students that are identified to receive those sessions. Greg also started working with Lori on a school-based mental health grant from the DPI. This is a $75,000 grant. It's in the hopper. It's due on May 3. I'm sure they're going to do a fine job on that. And just for the month of February, so everybody knows, Greg wrote three grants, and a total being requested of $1,161,925. Year to date, Greg has earned almost $140,000. And remember, we thought 100 grand would be a benchmark in less than a, well, yeah, about half of a year, he's exceeded that benchmark of what we thought he could do in a year. So almost $140,000 with a total of five grants approved so far. He's just, he's a talented, and we're blessed to have him. So that's good news. The Wapaka Growth Team, a little update, that's something, you know, we've been working on for the last two years. I included a news article, in case you have not yet seen it, but the Foundry. You know, this growth is really an economic development initiative that's partnered between the district, the chamber, and the city. But finding out that the Foundry, between the Wapaka Foundry and the Marinette Foundry, are going to be adding 200 more positions is extremely exciting for us as a school district. And then when you look at that second bullet point, knowing that over the last year, Aaron, single-handedly, while with the help of his team, they've been working with developers, and now, according to my account, in talking with Aaron last, the week before break, a total of 116 new housing units are in the process of being built right now. This includes both the single family and multifamily, which would be condos as well, and they're to be completed in the next 18 months, approximately 18 months to two years. There's different schedules for the different developers that have been involved in this process. And you're aware of this, the Facebook targeted marketing that will be taking place this month. The target marketing will occur. Last month, we introduced the videos and exposed those to the public. And then internally here, we are going to be working on an additional eight to 10 school district videos to be incorporated into this packet of 40 between the city, the chamber, and the school district. And my personal hope is that we can get these scripted out and videoed and in the queue for our marketers when they do this target marketing by the end of the school year in June. Later this week, Aaron and myself and Terry from the chamber will be creating a summary video of what this work is, and through the chambers, I'm trying to remember the committee. It's an economic development type of committee. Anyway, through that committee, as we were talking about what we were doing, they recommended that we put a summary video together and then sent it out to our local businesses, because they may want to invest in this as well. So we're hoping that some of our local businesses will participate and invest in this project, so it's just not the district, the city, and the chamber. Some of the businesses can get involved themselves to help support this economic development growth. Placeholder, this is just a reminder, on March 26, we have our special board meeting. We're going to talk about the January WASP convention and the sessions that we attended. And just in FYI, our process, I wanted to share this with the full board, our processes and how we go about scheduling these special meetings, like the one coming up on the 26th and the committee meetings. I received some input asking if we should, would consider Google surveys to schedule our special committee meetings. And so then I spoke with Sandy, she's delegated with kind of helping coordinate those and schedule those. And so the next three bullet points are, just so everybody's aware, how we go about this. Whenever another committee meeting is needed to be scheduled, what Sandy does is email the entire board of the proposed dates or dates, if sometimes there's more than one date that we have available. Typically, she receives less than half of the board as far as responding to that. So then Sandy then will follow up with those committee members on a committee to determine if that date will work or not. If the date doesn't work, all three for all three committee members, she then will find an alternative date and try to find one that will work for those three committee members. And she did create recently, since our conversation, a Google survey, and anticipate that that may be used in the future as we try to work to schedule these additional meetings. My last piece is just, we've been eagerly waiting, and we received this yesterday, the WIAA Spring Sport Update. It's a 21-page document, and I didn't read it 100%, but I did more than skim it. I went through all 21 pages, and I picked out some highlights. It is nothing shocking. It is nothing what we didn't expect. It's very similar to the same thing we've been doing, but because all of our outside, all of our sports for the spring are outside, one thing of known and we anticipated, because this is what happened with football, once athletes begin warmups, they will be allowed to take their mask down while they're competing. But when they're on the sidelines, just like all of our other sports, they, you know, they need to put their mask on. All of the same COVID basics as previously expected, such as the pre-screening, the cleaning that we do, those processes, the cohorting and record-keeping for contact tracing purposes will all be there. The physical distancing will be included. And the big thing that everybody is looking forward to are the attendees and the spectators. And we know that tier one there that you can see under item D, athletes, coaches, they're essential. Preferred would be media to allow the events to be broadcast, and then, of course, the tier three, the spectators, the ones that we all want to be a part of. As soon as state and local health departments lift restrictions, spectators will be allowed. We anticipate that that isn't going to be a problem. I'll be finding out from Jed in my meeting tomorrow, and I meet with him again on Friday, and that's one of the questions. I know our athletic conferences will be meeting with Joe, our athletic director, and, you know, honestly, with the six feet apart, we think that it's very possible that we could have a large number of people to be able to be at all of our spring events. Our spring events aren't highly, there's not a lot of spectators. Baseball probably has the most, but people can spread out along the fence and stay six feet apart, so we should be in pretty good shape there. Pretty excited about that. And that's all I have, unless somebody has a question.
Any questions for Mr. Tari? Sandy?
Well, I know there's a lot of interest in esports and activities. Are you getting calls from parents or questions from students?
I personally haven't, which is good. They've I personally haven't, which is good. Maybe they're calling Joe or the principal, and they didn't, you know. But we did have a request from an outside community group to, I think it was our theater group, to use. And so when I ran up by the doctors before break, they were like, you know, we're just not ready at this point. Let's get through these vaccines. Let's evaluate if we get closer to spring, closer to the end of the school year. And so I shared that with the group, and we'll see.
Ron, I have a question.
Yes.
Ron, how many approximately of our staff are going to receive their inoculations on Wednesday?
What I was told was a little over sixty percent.
Is that just the teaching staff or is that our entire staff?
That's the entire group. Yeah, the entire group.
That's just for Wednesday because I know a lot of people already have gone into Walgreens and things like that.
This was, this is, you know, this could have increased since then, but this was the initial, when Jed had us through the initial sign-up, it was a little over sixty percent said they wanted to get the vaccine. We're pretty excited about that because some places, it's in the thirties or less than fifty.
But what you were saying is that in addition, is this for the sixty percent who signed up for what's going to happen on Wednesday?
No, this was just originally the initial.
Got it. That's your bet. Well, it'll be interesting to see then what the real numbers turn out to be. I was hopeful.
I don't think they'll be lower than that. They would only grow.
Yeah, that's what I would think.
And we may never be able to fully find out.
Right.
We can ask. Yeah. We can ask, but we wouldn't have the information to be able to confirm the specifics. So. Other questions for Mr. Sari? With that, we'll move on to technology updates. We have Mr. Tom Macheski spending his birthday. Time enlightening us on technology in 2021.
Good evening, everybody. Mark, if you could just start on the third screen. That'd be great. When we look at this, last year, exactly one year ago today, on my birthday that time also, we, I was walking to the WLC very early in that morning, and we had two days to basically prepare staff to go on a fourteen-day to flatten the curve mission. But I had been being, getting told from my counterparts higher up and better places and higher places that this was going to be a lot longer and that we should really be prepared. And that was pretty daunting to walk into that building and to have everybody try to figure out like how we were going to do this. So I'm not going to lie when I say that the last year and a half has been really challenging. But we were able to deploy all those devices to those students and the staff to work remotely. While we were still able to filter and have access to dealing, while we were getting constantly cyber attacked from outside places. And there's never been a year, especially in education, where you've had so many cyber threats happen. And it seemed like every week something was happening, and we did very well. But it was one of those extra layers we had to add on. While no one could have predicted a global pandemic, I'm truly proud of how we were able to pivot, meet the needs and demands of the environment. Working tirelessly throughout the summer to improve the performance and security was a top priority. While I'm proud of the final product we were able to put out, I am also excited that hopefully we can start getting back to our long-term plan that we have for the district. I want to put a twist on this year is everybody kind of has a different way of looking at it. I want to look at some positives here with you. We were able to get a hundred and fifty-five hotspots for internet access, which provided two hundred and three students the ability to work at home. We worked with UL Celler to filter those hotspots so they only worked with our district devices so that they couldn't log on with one of their own computers or a phone. And that it's kind of held down to the same standard as when they were at school. We were also to get K through twelve one-to-one devices, which we had never done before. And that was two thousand-plus devices for students that we were able to continue learning while they were at home and on Wednesdays. And we were able to get those out within a weekend when we first went through this process. We went to a learning management system, working with Mark Flaton. And we went to Schoology and Seesaw to standardize our delivery of material. Schoology is going to be what we do, and our staff should be very proud of themselves of what they did. And I made no bones about it with our core team that usually you don't roll out an LMS and make it super successful in three months. It's usually a year and a half process. And not only did we, were we able to roll it out, our teachers knocked it out of the park. We moved to a product called ClassLink, which provided easy access to all our digital platforms for our students. So when they log into a device on their Chromebook, all of their apps just show on their screen. They click on it, it automatically would log them in. They had an overwhelming demand at the beginning of the school year, and there were some hiccups. We worked through those. So when a student enrolls in our district, the next morning, they have access to all of those apps and they have access on their computer. We were able to put streaming cameras into every classroom. We added new laptops at the WLC that we just finished. And today, the final boards, the interactive boards to replace the rest of the smart boards showed up for the WLC that will be installed. Classroom relay was, we were able to use to deliver live contact content to all of our students to monitor what they were working on, whether they were in a classroom or whether they were at home. And we were able to send them links and do these things live, and it was amazing. We were also able to watch as our educators reinvented how they teach, and they did it very well. Here's a picture of what the new boards look like in the classroom. And as you can see on the other picture is a standard-ish now-looking workstation where instead of used to have a main computer there, what they have now is a laptop that plugs into this, that they can take home and use. So that way, there's just not a desktop sitting there. That was one of the things that made me pretty sad as I walked around last spring, was that there was a lot of computers just sitting here. And I thought, well, how can we do this better? And I was happy with the the path that we were taking, knowing that that would, that made a lot of sense where staff could just unplug their device, plug it in, and we could go. I knew there was going to be hiccups, but we were able to do that. The next part is on our technology integration. You know, we continue to provide high-quality technology integration for teachers throughout the district. Having these technology integration specialists and the library media center specialists at each level provide staff with an easy-reach contact person, especially during this time. I asked a lot out of them, and they did a great job. Technology integration specialists and the library specialists led the charge with Schoology and Seesaw. They put a ton of time in over the summer. They put a ton of time in during the school year to teach staff individually, to teach staff in large groups, to teach them remotely. They spent a lot of their summer doing this work. They also led by example on how to use a lot of the new technology that was going into the classrooms. They were able to test the new technologies and make sure that they could support the staff when the staff had the questions for them. On the technology refresh strategy, having current technology is the mission, is our mission critical to the district. We want to make sure that we're following those best practices whenever we're doing these things. And we talked about this last year at this time. What's going to be new for next year is that we were able to figure out a way within our current budget without actually adding any money to our budget to provide a K through four one-to-one program that's going to be start rolling out next year. Because what we did learn during this time is, yes, we had devices that we were able to provide to the students, but we needed to make sure that we provided them a device that was sustainable moving forward. So that way, not only was it able to run the apps we wanted them to run, but knowing that there could be times with snow days, all these things in the future that we want to do. We've always got that eye towards the future. We've done a good job with our E-rate throughout the years. WLC was just outfitted this last week during spring break with much better Wi-Fi coverage. So they will notice a much improved improvement there. We're just finishing the rotation at the WLC that we started last year to work on. And so as we move away now from the WLC that will finish, we're going to wait till the first week of summer or the second week of summer to put everything in. But we'll move to the middle school now. We also have put an added emphasis on protecting our network and our data because we know that these, as we monitor these increasing attacks from the outside, that there's just going to become more and more. I've also provided that long-term plan that we talked about last year at this time. And the thought is, hey, let's get back there as soon as we possibly can because that'll be what we really want to do. And some final thoughts. Hopefully, this is the last time that you're having a board meeting in that room as we have new streaming capabilities coming into effect in in our community room that will allow us to stream these board meetings in that room, actually. We also have that same streaming we were able to do in the PAC. So in the future, we'll be able to stream our plays, our choir concerts, all of those extra events to people. We also added an extra one that's mobile, so it can go in the cafeteria or into the fieldhouse. And that will provide us the fact that maybe we want to do, Mr. Felton decides he wants to host the trivia night. And we want to have a remote group for maybe students that of the past have a team that they can do that. Or Madrigal, that we could actually have that streamed out to the people during that time that can't make it. And then also to move that to the fieldhouse for not only graduation, but as we look at, how can we provide a, probably a better streaming option for our parents and for our alumni to see some of the games versus what we currently have. And on the final thought, you know, it has been a hard year, and it's strange to turn around, and it's already been a year. I told Ron a couple of weeks ago, I've never had a year that seemed so long but went so fast, if that makes any sense. But we were successful because I'm blessed to have a really good team. I just wanted to thank Steve Baumann, Matt Warner, Ashley Trebatowski, Stephanie Canoe, Art Schultz, Crystal Vita, Heidi Nowicki, Sarah Hanneman, and Chris Yonkey because there's been no way that this would have even worked or even been possible to support our staff or do the things that we were able to do this year without their support. That's what I got.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions? Hearing none at the moment. Steve, thank you very much. I think that sometimes the accomplishments that you have made in order to allow us to deliver the education we have, it's overshadowed a bit. We all think we have computers and a link. It should be that simple, and obviously it isn't. I can tell you that we are all, because we're coming from a bunch of people that are technically inept. We are all very, very impressed with what's been accomplished and very much appreciate what you and your team have done. So our heartfelt thanks, and again, happy birthday.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to.
Technically inept.
Okay, some of us, some of us. In comparison to what he's talking about, yeah. With that, we say some of the best things for the middle of our meetings, and one was that IT report. And the next would be our student representative report. Elizabeth, are you ready?
Yeah. So as of last month, I believe it was, well, it's today. All the students that have chosen to be in person are back in person. And most of what my peers have been saying is that they liked the four-day schedule. And obviously, at the beginning, there was some adjusting, not wanting to get up in the morning, a little extra groggy. But I think it has been a positive change, and I'm starting to see more cheerfulness in the halls, and it's just starting to feel more, I would say, homey, but at school. And the classrooms are starting to feel a little more like a place where we can have classroom discussions rather than just sit, work on your computer for a while and then, because that's how it was feeling in that two-day-a-week schedule. And hopefully, this cheerfulness is something that can keep up next week because juniors are having their ACT text testing this coming Tuesday. I think, oh, yeah. And at the last student council meeting, there was, we talked about the recent hygiene drive. It was a competition between all the departments of the school to see who could raise the most, bring in most products of hygiene. And I'm pretty sure that the English department won. Yeah. I think that's all the big student news.
I'm not surprised, Mr. Felton.
I said, math people are always clean anyway. Well, thank you very much. I'm glad to hear that students are feeling a little more comfortable with the new routine. Certainly, it's been a dramatic change going one way initially last year and now swinging back. So hopefully, the cheerfulness that you're observing will continue.
Yeah, I hope so, too.
Is the lunchroom a little more cheerful?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, for sure. There's a lot more talking.
Starting to get to the point where you have to scream a little bit to hear your friend.
That's good news.
Yeah. And do you hear people saying, talking about graduation or prom or with excitement of some of these things returning?
Yeah, more this year, around this time with the ACTs. I've been hearing more about colleges and it seems that everybody's pretty excited to see.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm thankful for joining us tonight. We appreciate it.
Elizabeth, are you in any choir or B M classes?
No.
I'm just curious how those are going.
We can get you to hit the board and update.
Okay. That'd be good to know because they're playing instruments now. And are they singing in the in the gym or the gym or the P A C?
I don't know if it's the P A C or if it's the choir room. Do you know? Is it?
I don't remember off the top of my head.
And what maybe you have.
But they're singing.
Are they? Will they have a concert?
A concert?
A spring, they always have a spring concert.
I think Eric is talking about a virtual one. I know we talked about it with our medical team on Friday before break, and they weren't ready yet to.
But if they could, if there's going to be a camera in the P A C, you know, even if they could do it from there on the risers, but it would be live streamed. I wonder if that's all they do.
I think Eric was talking to Joe about something with his camera. He was going to be videoing individuals or something like that, try to mesh it together.
I've seen that.
If you could get us a little update, it would be appreciated.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that upcoming meetings, we've got the March 19th Policy Committee meeting at 11 o'clock. March 22 finance committee meeting at 11 o'clock. March 26 special board meeting at 11 o'clock, and that's the one that Mr. Sari referenced earlier. April 6th, Election Day. April 8th is the election canvas with the April 13th. At the election canvas place. Okay. Then we have a regular board meeting, April 13th at 5:15, probably in the community room. April 16th, Policy Committee meeting, and April 30th, Policy Committee meeting. With that, we'll move on to the Policy Committee.
Okay, I'm going to have Sandy and Mark help me out here if I forget anything as we move along. We met two times since our last regular board meeting. We met on February 12th. And that'll be the first items, as you see. I asked if Mark Flaton could put those up because we sent some of this back. We probably will have no trouble in terms of okaying this. But we wanted to make sure the wording was correct, so we sent some of this back for a little tweaking. The first one, as you can see, is the governance process as it pertains to board member compensation. And we worked out the dollar amount and agreed to that. And we also worked out the language, which I believe has been changed and you see in front of you. So if there is no other comments, we see in red the implementation date would be May 1 of 2021, and we'll review this in January of 2023. And if my committee members are in agreement, I would make this in the form of a motion.
Okay, as being a committed motion, recommendation that does not require a second. To that end, are there any questions or conversation, discussion? Okay, roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Eddie Mania? Yes, Pat there?
Hi.
Sandy Robinson? Yes, Dale Bell?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. And then next, we have, and Mark will bring it up for us. Thank you. We had a little bit of a change in terms of some language on the sexual and other forms of harassment, 0145 policy. And I believe the, and maybe I'll let Ron here, Ron, everything that's in red has been implemented?
Yeah, that, I didn't get to typing it up, so we're still going with my handwriting. But that will be put in where the A is, the A in the bottom and the A at the last paragraph will be added.
Okay. Committee members, again, unless there's anything that you might want to add, I would make a recommendation that the full board approve.
This being a committee recommendation, it does not require a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mania? Yes.
I.
I.
Sandy Robinson? Yes, Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, and next, excuse me, was 0152 and as it pertains to officers, and there was very little change here, basically some concepts that were sort of outdated that we eliminated. And so again, without any, if there's not any other comment from committee members, I would ask that we adopt policy number 0152 pertaining to officers.
This being a committee recommendation, it does not require a second. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mania? Yes. Pat Fair?
I.
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 Sandy Robinson? Yes, Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, next is the Annual Board Reorganization Meeting and there were a few changes that we implemented and I think you can see those in green on this document. We just wanted to go over some of the things that were necessary to put in. And so again, I would make the recommendation that we accept policy 0151.1 Annual Board Reorganization Meeting Policy.
All right, thank you. This being a committee recommendation, it does not require a second. Is there any discussion? There being none, roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mania? Yes, Pat Fair?
I.
Mark Paulavinsky?
I.
Sandy Robinson? Yes, Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, next is policy 0152, I believe, officers, Mark? You'll put that up.
I'm sorry, wrong one.
My mistake. Okay, that was the last of them. I was looking in the wrong place. Okay, so the rest of the policies, as you can see, there's a long laundry list there and we believe as a committee that all of them were acceptable in the written form that they came in. There were no changes made to them. So I think for the record, I will read all of them off, just the numbers, and so that it goes into the record and then we'll take all of them in one fell swoop unless my committee members have any other suggestions. Mark, Sandy, you're good with that? Okay, I would then ask the full committee or the full board to adopt Presiding Officer 0163, Special Meeting 0164.2, Notice of Regular Meetings 0165.1, Change of Regular Meetings 0165.2, Close Session 0167.2, President 0171.1, Vice President 0171.2, Clerk 0171.3, Treasurer 0171.4, Legal Counsel 0172, Independent Auditor 0173, Annual Report 0174.1, School Performance Report 0174.2, Other Reports 014.3, Association Membership 0175, District Organization 1100, and Conflict of Interest 1130, and I'd ask the full board to adopt all of those.
All right, this being a committee recommendation, it does not require a second. Any discussion on any of the policies being recommended? Hearing none, roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mania? Yes. Pat Fair?
I.
Mark Paulavinsky?
I.
Sandy Robinson? Yes, Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, so that took care of our February 12th Committee Meeting and that moves us on to February 26th. And again, we went through a goodly number of policies. Some of them we have to look at again individually here because of some minor changes and then there again is a laundry list to come up after that. So first one was board ethics. And we looked at the suggested policy by Neola as well as what we presently have and I believe, and Ron, you can speak to this if need be, we added a couple of things, or maybe Ron, Steve Johnson, were you, is this your work? Did you merge these two together in this one?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. And so basically we merged a couple, some of the ideas from our present policy into this policy and I believe everything you see in front of you, you've had a chance to look at, is what we intended as a committee and I would recommend to the full board that we adopt.
We agree, committee recommendation, it requires no second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mania? Yes. Pat Fair?
I.
Paulavinsky?
I.
Sandy Robinson? Yes, Dale Feld?
Yes.
Okay, next on the list was the Consent Agenda, 0166.1. And again, there are a few or there were a few wording changes that we had asked Ron to put in and I assume, Ron, those are in red for us. And if there are no other concerns from my committee, I would recommend the Consent Agenda 0166.1 be approved.
This being a committee recommendation, it requires no second. Is there any discussion? There being none, roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mania? Yes. Pat Fair?
I.
Mark Paulavinsky?
I.
Sandy Robinson? Yes, Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, next is the Employment of the District Administrator. And again, there were a few minor changes that we had in terms of some language issues that we wanted to be inserted and/or changed and the policy, let's see, this is 1220. Employment of the District Administrator is the version that the committee believes is acceptable and I would ask the full board to approve.
Thank you, committee recommendation, it requires no second. Is there any discussion? There being none, roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mania? Yes. Pat Fair?
I.
Mark Paulavinsky?
I.
Sandy Robinson? Yes, Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, next we have Student Supervision, oh no, next we have the laundry list, right? Yeah, okay. So before I read this, I just want to give, because this will be the end of our committee report, I want to thank our committee for going through all of these and the full board, everybody helps. It's kind of an onerous task to do because there are hundreds of policies as we all know and sometimes it seems like we get bogged down, but I think we're moving in the right direction. So I would ask the full board to adopt the following, Student Supervision and Welfare Neola 1213, I'll just read the numbers, 1213, Development of Administrative Guidelines 1230.01, Non-Reemployment of the District Administrator 1241, Incapacity of the District Administrator 1260, Job Descriptions 1400, District Administrator Job Description 1400.01 as amended. And then the Combined Neola and Governance Version, which would be Neola 1422, and finally 14, and I know that number is off the screen there, I don't know what number that is, unfortunately, I don't see it.
143.02.
Ah, there it is, .02, and 1460, and I would ask the full board to accept all of those and that's our recommendation.
Being a committee recommendation and the last time you have to hear me say it, no second is required. Any discussion?
I just want to thank you for the work that you did on combining some of the elements of our governance manuals, job description to create the hybrid that we have now.
Yeah, for the record, on the screen, you will see that the District Administrator Job Description 1400.01, in parentheses, it says as amended. The amended version that Sandy's referencing that Steve put together where he combined the Neola and the governance policy is right below it there. Mark has clicked on it and that is the doc.
Okay, very good. Any discussion?
I would just want to say, Steve, one more thing, most, for people listening, most of our discussion on these policies have been done in the committee, at the committee level, so therefore, you know, we're bringing these forward, but we have, we spent hours going over all of these just so people know if you're listening in and we're going to continue to do that. As you read earlier, we have a couple of meetings, one more meeting this month and two scheduled for April. So we'll keep plodding along with all of our policies and hope to bring them back to the board in final form. Thank you.
Roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mania? Yes. Pat Fair?
I.
Mark Paulavinsky?
I.
Sandy Robinson? Yes, Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. With that, we'll move on to the Personnel Committee. Betty Mania, please.
Okay. Let me click on the board.
Is that linked there, Mark?
Yep.
Thank you. The Personnel Committee met on March 1st here at the high school and all the members of our committee were virtually present and the other additional members were also present. And we approved the agenda and we had a few items that we took care of. Mr. Clayton provided a staffing update for us for next year and projections for the next school year and it appears that we will overall just need one full-time employee for next year. We approved some job sharing agreements that are continuations of past years. Mr. Clayton provided an update of the January 4 Student Enrollment Spreadsheet, which reflects the current enrollment numbers as today in each of our schools. And then we asked several questions about virtual learning for next year, what it was going to look like, what all would be helped, and we were informed that there would be two learning modalities that would be offered, in-person and then on-demand. Creating a virtual school would be an incredible task and it would require another position or administrator and so it's not something that we're looking forward, looking into doing for the 21, 22 school year as we envision that everything will be pretty much back to normal by next year.
Yeah, that's right, Betty. One thing I want to interject, the two modalities would only be for the upper class, the junior seniors, who meet those standards to be able to handle an on-demand, so that would be, there wouldn't be very many of them. So most of it will just be the in-person.
And we also talked a bit about the mental health of our students. It's come to several board members' attention. I know nationwide, there's been a lot said on it, how the lack of in-person schooling has created a lot of anxiety in young people, a lot of depression in young people, and so we are very aware of it. And hence, it was nice to hear about the grants that we've just gotten that we can use toward mental health. So we're really focusing on next year, remainder of this year, on the mental health, not only of our students but also the faculty, because like it was said earlier, this is the longest, shortest year on record and we're very concerned about the mental health of our entire community. So the meeting adjourned at 11:32 and it was a very successful meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, I just a comment, being a member of the committee, Mark Clayton, you gave a wonderful report as always, but I just wanted to know if there was, since we had that meeting, I know all of our updates are fluid, has there been any changes one way or the other in terms of staffing that we might hear tonight that's different from what we heard in the committee?
Yes. Pat, Mark, do you care if I take that?
Sure, why not?
Yeah. We did hire our two tech ed teachers, which he had put in there, which was amazing that we were able to hire two great candidates that were, they want to live in the area, they're ones from Manawha, they want to, they're making a house together, it was amazing. And then in the face position that he had listed up there, we had some good candidates and after it came down at the end of the day, you can see in the consent agenda, we're recommending to hire Chris Rasmussen, who actually took over the long-term subbing position there and for the face position in the middle school and he's committed to go back to UW Stevens Point and to get that degree in the next year. And we couldn't be more excited to have a face that's done everything possible that we've asked him to do in this very tough year on that CTE side and Laura, she's, there's her face right there, we had an amazing run with those three candidates, so you see those on there and that's the one update I have and I know Mark's probably got a couple more, but that was really exciting to be able to get those done and it's not the end of March.
Can I ask a quick question? Is Chris Rasmussen a graduate of?
Yes, he is. I think he graduated with Mark.
Where's this one?
He graduated, Charlie and Rachel. So he graduated in 97, I believe.
He's a very good coach, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, he is very good.
Very talented, very talented caddy.
Yeah, yeah.
Sandhill.
And a good golfer, for those of you who golf.
Yeah.
And actually, when I was coaching, Chris was part of some of the original teams for boys soccer at the high school, so I had the opportunity to work with him years and I know his sister very well, Jessica.
He was actually on my O M team.
Was his mom a staff here too for many years for us?
Yeah, he was an awesome teammate, so we are blessed to have him.
Jessica was an artist.
Okay, Mark, do you have anything else to add?
No, I think we're on par to fulfill our vacancies and it's March and so those are the most challenging ones in the world of CTE in this day and age and so we're excited for that. And it kind of bucks some gender trends, but having a male Family and Consumer Science teacher and having a female Technology and Engineering teacher, I think is exciting for all of our students.
Very good, thank you. With that, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda.
I would move approval of the Consent Agenda.
Motion by Sandy Robinson, is there a second? I'll second that. Second by Dale Feld, any discussion? Roll call.
Steve Hackett?
Hi.
Betty Mania? Yes. Pat Fair?
I.
Mark Paulavinsky?
I.
Sandy Robinson? Yes. Dale Feld?
Yes.
Steve Johnson?
Yes. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second, but I have a question before we go. Is there, have we received a agenda yet for Monday's meeting, Finance Committee Meeting?
No.
No, it should be out shortly. Based on the communications I've seen, it should be out certainly by the end of the week, possibly tomorrow.
What do you think?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Can I ask a question too? As for the special meeting that we're going to have to talk about our convention sessions that we attended, how, what does that look like? What is that format going to be? We're all going to report on what we went to or?
Well, some of them were repeats.
Right.
So you know, when Steve and I, we sort of talked about that and think, what were you saying, Steve? Do you remember?
I was hoping you would. We'll give everybody, you know, the opportunity to discuss any of the, or share any of the presentations that they went to, in that we will not have a specific agenda for the public as to which sessions will be presented. We really will not be able to entertain discussion or debate on whether or not it's something that the district might want to pursue if they're talking about various modes of education or governance or anything like that. So it'll be presentations by individuals on the sessions, but not really discussion per se.
Okay.
You can ask a couple of questions, but we really are not going to be in a position to formulate any constructive thoughts, if you will.
Okay.
Certainly, we can put something on an agenda in the future, but it will not be for discussion or. for discussion or debate at that point in time.
And we will all have each other's notes by then to follow?
Well, that's up to the individuals, you know, to send to me. Everybody that sent me stuff is posted on that landing page.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great evening. We have a little more daylight left.